Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for coming out this evening to the second of three candidate forums, the Leavenworth Lansing Area Chamber of Commerce in partnership with the Leavenworth County League of Women Voters are hosting this election season. Tonight, as you know, we are hosting a forum for the Leavenworth City Commission election. Unfortunately, not all the candidates could be here with us this evening. I do have statements to read from two of the other candidates who are uptown. With us tonight will be the incumbents. Before we get started, I just wanted to go ahead and have over some housekeeping items with you. We will be keeping time. I've got Paul and Jerry right here in the front row keeping time for us. Thank you, ladies, doing that for us. The format will be, we will give the candidates after a brief statement. We'll give the candidates each three minutes for an opening. We will then begin questions from a slate of prepared questions. They'll have up to three minutes to answer, and we will then open to the floor for questions. Now, we are scheduled to go until eight o'clock, but if we end up finishing early, that is never a bad thing. We will kind of play it by ear and see where we find ourselves. One very important point I would like to reiterate that I have made at all of our forums is we expect everyone to behave with respect and observe decorum. If anything gets out of hand, if any personal attacks are launched, we will end the event then there. So we ask everyone to please do their best to refrain from anything like that because we aren't here to inform. We're here to learn and nothing more. This is a, the chamber is a nonpartisan organization, and as such, as I said, we are here to inform. The forum is being recorded, and we will broadcast that. We should have it available for viewing on, well, tomorrow at some point. So we will have that on our YouTube channel. We will then share it in mass email as well as all of the chamber's social media outlets. So look for that at some point tomorrow. And finally, we will have one final forum next Tuesday evening at six o'clock. We will be in the Lansing Community Center for the Lansing School District elections. With that, I will go ahead and begin by reading the statements submitted, and then we will get to opening statements of the candidates present. First, I have a statement here from Dehingula, and the statement reads as follows. Thank you to the Leavenworth County League of Women Voters and the Leavenworth Lansing Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity to address the voters of this city of Leavenworth. While I regret not being in the forum, I am grateful for the opportunity to have a statement read by my friend and the president of the chamber, Mr. Jolines. I am Dehingula, a Leavenworth resident for over 21 years. I have been happily married to my wife Teresa for over 37 years, and we have a son and daughter, both of whom graduated from Leavenworth High School. We also have four granddaughters. I am a retired military and civil service member. I think one of the most important issues is representation of the individual citizens of Leavenworth. Each and every citizen should be able to understand that they have a voice in the city government, whether they are rich or not, a business owner, or homeowner, or rent, an apartment, or house. All should be able to speak to someone dedicated to representing them on the city commission. That's what I grew up thinking elected officials were supposed to do. I had no private agenda, no pet project to accomplish. I'm willing to take the time to listen to what the people of Leavenworth want to have happened and hopefully advocate for their position on issues. Second, I want to see that the city is responsible with the money that it spends, your tax dollars. One of the things we need to do is identify both the needs and wants. The city has many wants, with many of those wants being good ideas that may actually enjoy your living in Leavenworth. But I think it's most important to identify the things that we need in the city and work with organizations and those wanting to improve Leavenworth to fund and accomplish those needs. Work for things like affordable housing in the northern part of Leavenworth, a supermarket in the northern part of the city to make it easier for residents to shop their groceries, an emergency room, again, in the northern part of the city to provide necessary services. Certainly, the city has many needs, and it is those needs that should come first and should be worked for first. Lastly, I believe strongly in individual liberties and freedoms. The mask mandate imposed by, excuse me, the, the mask mandate imposed on the citizens and the business owners of Leavenworth last year demonstrated government stepping in line of individual liberties, but that's not all it did. To begin with, I believe people can decide for themselves what's best to maintain their and their families' health and well-being. Nobody's rights should be stepped on like that at any level of government. But along with the masks were other restrictions, particularly on businesses, especially restaurants, such as how many customers could be in the business at one time, the social distancing required. We lost some businesses in the last year. We don't need to lose those businesses or the jobs that went away with them. That is Mr. Ingula's statement for the evening. I will now read Mr. Griff Martin's statement. Dear guests, thank you very much for affording me the opportunity to speak to you through this letter tonight. My name is Griff Martin, and I am very excited to be running for your city commission here in Leavenworth. My top priority as a husband, father, and businessman is to ensure that our families and businesses can move forward with new opportunities. Developing a winning culture within our city begins with getting engaged with our people and businesses on a whole new level and making sure every voice is heard. Working together, we will raise the quality of life for our families, protect our individual liberties and freedoms, create more visibility and transparency in our city government, bring a new energy and life to our city, drive, grow, and build our Leavenworth economy, partner with our local business owners on a whole new level, explore new avenues to bring more jobs and visitors to our city, and create the best possible place to call home. I believe our city has a vast amount of potential that just needs to be unlocked, and I look forward to working with each of you to drive forward with new opportunities. Thank you again for your report and allowing me to speak to you tonight. And again, that was the statement of Mr. Griff Martin. We will now go to the candidates present for opening statements. Each candidate will have up to three minutes. I am going in alphabetical order, and then we'll rotate through alphabetical order throughout the rest of the evening. So we will start with Mr. Griswold, and I have told the candidates to feel free to unmask so they can be clearly understood while speaking. Mr. Griswold.
Thank you. Good evening, Leavenworth citizens. Four years ago, I ran for Leavenworth City Commission, came in second, and was elected to a four-year term. I began serving in January 2018, and in early December 2019 was elected by my fellow commissioners to serve as a one term, to serve one term as Leavenworth mayor. Beginning in March 2020 until the end of my term last December, I led the city's timely and effective response to the COVID-19 health crisis and ensuing economic challenges. Now I am running for reelection to the Leavenworth City Commission. I am proud of what I've been able to accomplish over the last four years in Leavenworth. Look around the city, believe your eyes. Recent improvements have taken place in a number of areas, including infrastructure, especially roads and the aging stormwater system, the city's appearance and image, public safety, economic development, and our parks and recreation programs. However, there is more that must be accomplished, and when reelected, I will use my significant experience, 16 years of public service governing experience and business and program management acumen to build on the progress made in the city in recent years, moving us closer to achieving the community's new vision of, quote, "making Leavenworth the best city in the Midwest," unquote. My priorities for a second term are laid out on my campaign website, www.vogriswold.com. I go into a fair amount of detail on those priorities. My approach in the second term will be the same as my first four years. In seeking solutions to tough problems, I will analyze available data and continue to collaborate with other commissioners and the many stakeholders within our community. I understand the importance of strategic communications, and will continue to keep citizens informed. I respectfully ask for your support and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griswold. Mr. Preisinger.
Good evening. I'm Mark Preisinger, and I'm running for reelection to the city commission. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the chamber for hosting and sponsoring this event. I'm a graduate of Leavenworth High School, as is my wife and our two children. I'm a graduate of K-State and have a master's degree in management. I'm a U.S. Army veteran and have lived and worked in various parts of the U.S. as well as all over the globe. I am proud to call Leavenworth my hometown for the past 59 years. In addition to the city commission, I served on the Leavenworth School Board for eight years, three years as president. I'm very proud of my service on the city commission. During my tenure, Leavenworth has prospered, and the citizens have benefited from many of the actions of the commission as a whole. Some examples include 40% reduction in the city's property tax in 2014, removal of many blighted properties, five new hotels when we had no decent ones before, increased our street maintenance budget from $700,000 a year to $2 million a year, complete renovation of the Fort Gate area with new businesses, the commitment of building a new U.S. penitentiary, a 380 million multi-year build job of which many local businesses and tradespeople will directly benefit, and many more businesses will benefit indirectly by workers staying here, shopping here, and eating in our restaurants. The expansion of the Eisenhower Road corridor is bringing new business and four lanes from Fourth Street all the way to Tongi Road. Leavenworth housing starts over the last 18 months have been the highest they've been for nearly 15 years. Housing starts for 2022 are expected to be even greater than 2021. People are investing here, and people want to live here. There are always difficult decisions which any elected body must make. There can be passion on all sides of any issue, so it is impossible to please all the people all the time. Some say, "Elect me, I'll represent all the people." There are times when some of the people disapprove of votes and say they are not being represented. The city commission is a nonpartisan elected body. There are some special interest groups focused on a very narrow agenda, but I strongly believe the majority of voters want commissioners who are focused on the overall betterment of Leavenworth and will elect those who they believe will use their best judgment in making those decisions. Honest disagreements can occur, but let's ensure decisions are being made based on facts and not half-truths or intentional falsehoods pushed by some. Let's keep the partisanship out of local elections. Let's elect people who are dedicated to making the best decision for Leavenworth and are not beholden to any particular persons or group. Divisive partisan tactics do not bode well for Leavenworth. I have the experience and integrity to continue to serve Leavenworth. I know the city very well. I have a vision for the betterment of Leavenworth and will always strive to achieve it. I remain committed to making Leavenworth a better place to live, work, invest, and raise a family. I would appreciate your vote on November 2nd or before, if you choose to vote early. I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson.
As my daughter. It's okay.
My name is Jermaine Wilson. I want to first start off thanking the League of Women Voters for allowing this opportunity to take place in the Chamber of Commerce. I am a faithful, committed public servant. I am dedicated and committed to serving this community. Proud to be joining the commission. I established a nonprofit organization called the United Needing Community to be able to serve and meet the needs of the citizens in our community, to mentor youth because of the lack of resources for our youth within our program. But most of all, there was a vision taking place throughout the United States, and I wanted to be able to create the relationships to bring citizens and local law enforcement together. But there was a need for change nationally, but we had to start right here at home. So serving, helping, assisting, bringing a trust and having the community talks with our local law enforcement opened the door for me to be able to join the commission. My desire to join the commission was to be a voice and represent those people who have been over-served for many years, that have been underserved and overlooked for many years. I grew up in this community. I didn't know, I did not know who our community leaders was. I was lost. I was not informed about local government. I felt that when that door opened up for me, it was an opportunity for me to bridge the gap between the citizens in the community and local government. I am a faithful husband. I am a father of five children. Leavenworth is home for me. I'm committed to serving. I'm committed to building a bright future for my children inside of this community. There is a need for youth and family activities. We are doing great economically. Our businesses are growing, but human development is so important. We need resources allocated to invest inside of our children and to be able to provide that safe place for family entertainment. It is needed. I'm definitely big on reducing the crime, doing whatever I can to help assist our local law enforcement. Crime is starting to increase. I would do whatever I can to help support our local law enforcement and to help reduce the crime. I just want to say thank you all for electing me in 2017 to serve for four years on the commission, and thank you to the commission for allowing me to serve as mayor in 2019. This is just the beginning. I still want to continue my efforts and hard work in establishing a grocery store on the northeast part of Leavenworth, and I would not stop until it is done, so you may see me for eight more years. God rest me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will now go into the first question, and I think, as it has been mentioned a couple of different times, the first question will be about that mask mandate. The question, one hotly debated topic this year has been the COVID-19 mask mandates and other restrictions or guidelines. What is or was your reasoning for whatever decision you made for either approving or disapproving of these mandates? We will start this time with Mr. Preisinger, and we will go up to three minutes.
So the question is...
Where you stood on the mask mandates and why?
I voted for the mask mandate along with four other commissioners back in November for, I believe it was in November until January 31st, and then I think we extended it until February 28th. I felt it was, we're in the midst of a national emergency, a national pandemic. There was not a vaccine available at that time. Medical experts recommended masking. Our own county EMS director, as well as the medical director, recommended it. They recommended it to the county commission. The county commission decided not to have a mask mandate for the county, but the city, we did decide to have one for the city. There were statements saying that we limited access, limited patrons in restaurants. We, the city, did not do any of that. I don't know where that came from. We had a mask mandate that if you're in close proximity with other people or indoors, you wore a mask. I don't feel it was that limiting. I know people say that we stepped on their rights. I thought it was for the greater good, and sometimes you have to make decisions for the greater good. I stand by that decision. I'm proud that we did do that. I'm proud, we don't need to do that now. There are vaccines available. I wish that more people would get the vaccine and that we climb out of this pandemic, and I, hopefully, we are on that road. There's, I don't know what the percentage in Leavenworth County is, but 50, 60% that have been vaccinated. If any of you here are not vaccinated, I'd urge you to get vaccinated. That's my position on the mask, and that's how I came to that decision. And once again, I stand behind my vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson.
I did vote against the mask mandate. First off, I am not anti-mask. I support each individual who makes the decision to wear a mask. I would not ridicule anyone who chooses not to wear a mask. My decision-making at the time was based upon, I felt as if it was unenforceable. We were at a very sensitive time with our local law enforcement, nationally with the George Floyd incident. I did speak with several officers and asked them what were their opinions and their stance on the mask. Several officers said, felt, they felt it was overreached. They felt like they didn't want to be subjected until enforcing the mask over a $5 fine, and I felt that it was an important need because, God forbid, if anything were to happen, an incident arrived at Leavenworth based upon a mask argument. And so I felt as if my decision was protecting our local law enforcement, and also I put my faith in the citizens and I truly believe that they would have made the right decision of doing what was best to protect themselves as well as their families.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Griswold.
I'd like to give a little, little bit of a history lesson for a minute or so, but there's been an accusation out there that the commission, the Leavenworth City Commission, rammed through an ordinance requiring Leavenworth citizens to wear masks when out in the public. And of course, that was in November. But on the contrary, the commission first addressed the issue in July 2020 at two meetings over the course of a week's time. At that particular time, we looked at the metrics in terms of COVID-19. There weren't any studies out on the effectiveness of masks, and we decided not to take any action. That was in July of 2020. Fast forward four months later, in the middle of November 2020, there was a study session. The metrics were getting very, very bad with respect to the positivity rate as far as getting COVID and also the daily case counts. And we felt we had to notify the public of a special meeting. We did that about 22 hours in advance of the meeting and held the meeting. During that particular meeting, I showed the, showed our citizens kind of a video from Jamie Miller, who was a county health officer, and his conclusion what the community spread in the county was escalating, and it was everywhere. I then presented the COVID-19 metrics and showed the extent of the spread in the Leavenworth County public schools. And finally, I summarized the study from KU that found a 50% reduction in the spread of COVID-19 in counties that had a mask mandate compared to those without. And while masks do not eliminate COVID-19, they significantly slow the spread of the disease. One of the most recent and reputable studies was that study that was completed in October 2020. There have been other studies recently out in Arizona and also by Duke University that has shown that schoolchildren who are wearing masks, the incidence of the spread of COVID-19 in those districts is very, very low as compared to other, other districts in the state of California, state of North Carolina, excuse me. I was proud of the commission's action when we voted four to one in November to go ahead and institute a mask ordinance in the public areas of Leavenworth. As I had been saying since the beginning of the pandemic, my highest priority as mayor was to do my very best to protect the health, welfare, and safety of all Leavenworth citizens and businesses. In a democratic society, there is always a tension between individual rights and actions that should be taken by elected leaders to further the public good or as our Constitution states to provide for the general welfare. As a city commissioner or mayor in 2020, the public good that I had a statutory and moral responsibility to attend to was the public health of Leavenworth City. Requiring masks in the public space to slow down and arrest the spread of the disease is one of the tools in the public health toolbox available to commissioners, and employing it was the right decision at the right time.
That's okay. All right. Thank you, sir. I was gonna say, that's time. Thank you, sir. All right. Next question, and this is what I would call a chamber question because this deals with economic development. The question is, the city places a high emphasis on the new business and technology park with regard to recruiting high-value employers that bring high wages to benefit residents. Do you have any thoughts on additional strategies for recruitment of businesses for the park or in the city in general? And we will start with you, Mr. Wilson.
I truly believe that the city is doing everything that they can to attract new businesses inside of our communities. I know there's some things that I've done behind the scenes that people don't see, and I know that we see an empty business park. I will be updated by the city manager and LCDC about the progress that is being made. Can't go into details with too much information, but we have come close to landing businesses inside of the technology park. I truly believe just with the communication, with the incentives that we're willing to provide to those businesses, I think if we consistently and continue to do it, eventually we're going to be able to land businesses inside of the technology park.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Griswold.
I agree with what Commissioner Wilson just articulated, and that's one of my priorities for a second term is to continue to emphasize, to try to bring businesses to the city's business and technology park. Achieving this priority requires a sustained marketing campaign, crafting cost-effective incentive packages, and devising innovative ways to attract potential investors. These three elements of the city's strategy are in place and being carried out, and we have been close with one or two fairly sizable manufacturing firms, and I think we have three projects that are in the queue right now. So we're taking the right steps. The fact that we have that business and technology park out there, if we didn't have it, we wouldn't be getting these inquiries and, and from companies not only locally but throughout, throughout the nation in terms of their interest in, in terms of locating within the city of Leavenworth. And I just think we've got to continue. I think we'll sometime in the not-too-distant future be successful in landing a particular company, and it's been three years, but there's been a lot of work both by LCDC, by our city manager, our assistant city manager, keeping the commissioners informed, us giving them feedback on what we think of the work that they're doing. And I believe we're going to see success out there with the first business, once we get the first business out there, because it's fully ready to go. All the utilities, you know, in terms of water and the storm sewer, the storm sewer system, the sanitary sewer, and all the utility hookups are ready to go. So it's a shovel-ready park, and I'm confident that in the not-too-distant future, we'll, we'll get our first business out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Preisinger.
As Commissioner Wilson kind of alluded to, there are some things going on that we're not at liberty to talk about. We're under some NDAs, non-disclosure agreements. But there are companies looking at our industrial park. It, it is, as Commissioner Griswold says, shovel-ready, and that's very important. Companies are now coming, looking at town or any place to build and say, "Do you have any land?" When you show them something that's ready for, ready, that's shovel-ready, those are things that they're looking at. We have, we work closely with LCDC, Leavenworth County Development Corporation, Kansas City Area Development Corporation. They come up here quite often. We get a lot of site visits from some major players in industry. As Commissioner Griswold said, you know, possibly we'll have some news here in a few weeks, possibly not. But without that park, we wouldn't get the looks. It was a $6 million park. It's a good investment, has not paid the dividends yet, but I'm very sure that it will pay dividends, and those will be good jobs, bring more people to town, more investment, more kids in our schools, more houses for people to live in. It's, it was well worth the money, and it will pay dividends in, hopefully, in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next question, we will remain on the topic of the local economy. It has been also a hot topic recently with regard to property taxes and taxation in general. So the question is, how do you or what do you address constituents' concerns with regard to increases in taxes and/or what are the most important factors regarding a taxation versus spending plan or not? And we will start with you, Mr. Griswold.
The city has the lowest mill levy of the three taxing entities for a resident of Leavenworth City, the other two being the school district and the county itself. Also, of the five cities in the Leavenworth County, Leavenworth City has the lowest mill levy. The increase in property taxes in the last few years is due to two factors. Increase in assessed value of residential and commercial business property and economic development, new houses and new businesses, and redevelopment, some sizable home upgrades, but mostly businesses making the investments to expand and grow. The office making these valuations decision is Leavenworth County Appraiser's Office. The county appraiser does its work in accordance with Kansas statute and serves at the pleasure of the five-member board of county commissioners. The increase in assessed valuation results in the city receiving about $350 million more in property taxes next year in 2022. $187 million more than half is allocated to businesses as a result of the economic incentives that the city, the city commission, has negotiated and approved with, through development agreements with businesses within, that have come to Leavenworth. For instance, out here, the Fort Gate Development Project that everyone sees that is going on, and with some existing businesses like Price Chopper and Luxury and Imports, the name too. The remaining $163,000 of the increase will be used to cover increased expenses for public safety, mostly for an increase in the salary for the city's police officers, plus more money for IT to cover the costs, and also to cover the cost and rise of commodities such as gasoline and natural gas, and to use about $65,000 for debt repayment. Finally, the city's 2022 budget calls for a .66 mill decrease to the city's overall mill levy, and sanitary sewer and trash rates will stay at 2021 levels. In fact, there'll be no increase in rates in those two areas. I think this is ample evidence of the city commission's efforts to keep the cost of government down while at the same time making investments in streets and roads, bridges, stormwater infrastructure, parks and recreation programs for families, public safety, police and fire, and economic development and redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Preisinger.
I have my tax statement for my house from this year, and if you look at it, 21%, if you have a, let's say your property tax bill is $1,000. $210 is to support the city, about $350 is to support the county. Residents of the city actually pay more in support of the county than you do in support of the city. And then $450 of it is for the school district. As with probably any city in the United States of America, the school district is usually the... the largest taxing entity, and that's what's required to support schools. On our taxes, you see the 31.2, 31.1 mils. It's actually 26 and some change because 4.75 mils is for the library rate. It's a pass-through to the city. We do not assess that. The library assesses it, but doesn't show as a separate line item. So our taxes are the lowest in the county. Of all the cities of the first class, there's 27 cities of the first class in the state of Kansas. I think Leavenworth is the second lowest mill levy. The lowest is Overland Park, and their mill levy is approximately half ours for the city. The reason being, all theirs is built on retail sales tax. Obviously, that's changing with them. They've had to raise their mill levy a little bit over the last few years, and they probably will have to in the future. I feel that our taxes are very fair. The total increase in taxes for, over last year, even with the 2/3 of a mil levy decrease, was $355,000. Does that mean your taxes or your house was appraised that much more? Some houses did get raising appraisal rates, but we had 38 new houses that came on the market. We had a new hotel at IMAC come on the tax roll, so that does increase the amount of money coming in. Of the $355,000, we only had $163,000 that we could spend. The other part was already committed back on tax incentive, TIF projects and things that were already committed to other businesses that would get their tax refunds for incentives. That $163,000, we used, as Commissioner Griswold said, for fire and safety, just the increases in fire and safety, fire and police for insurance, salaries, and KTNF, which is their retirement fund, amounted to over $600,000. So we did have to rearrange the budget somewhat, but we garnered $163,000 increase, and that's on 9,900 rooftops in the town, which I think is a very fair amount. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson.
Our objective premise that taxes are increased. The city's tax rate increased 0.66 mils, and property value remained the same or grew less than 3%. You will pay less city taxes in 2022. For some people, if their property value increased more than 3%, then yes, they will pay marginally more in property taxes in 2022. Property taxes pays for roads, public safety, personal commodities, and a number of other things. The small increase in expected property tax revenue does not come close to covering the costs related to increase in insurance, state mandated pensions, pay increases, and price increases for items such as gasoline. The city operates in the same economy as the private sector and are subject to the same price increases in wage pressure.
Thank you, sir. I think we'll go ahead and continue on this economic trend, so to speak. The next question, city Leavenworth finance staff have done an excellent job exceeding reserve goal targets in the budget. However, this does not mean there are always enough capital improvement funds to accomplish all projects on the list. How would you prioritize items during the budget process? We will start with you, Mr. President.
The reserve funds and capital improvement funds really are two separate things. They're, it's, they're not together, but I understand, I think I know what you're getting at. We do a capital improvements project. We go through that every year in the budgeting process, and we look at what we're going, where we're going to spend. We have a five-year plan on what we're going to do on capital improvement projects, can be major things like the Thornton Road reconstruction, bathrooms at Stubby Park, bathrooms at Havens Park, a variety of things. And we haven't planned out, does that mean? I think it was me. 2023, 2022 new equipment at Doherty Park, and it's not all parks and recreation. Sometime, we move some things out further, bring some things in. One thing that we're doing next year, we're bringing in a splash park. It's probably going to be at Hawthorne Park. I think many of us have seen one. It's a big, I don't know, concrete splash pad, maybe the size of this room, not quite the size of this room, water bubbling up, and the kids will be flocking into it during the summer months, obviously. It will not be a skating rink in the winter. And so we decided, we pulled that, we pushed some projects out a little bit further and brought that in, and I think it's relatively cheap if, I'll ask Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Griswold, $135,000, I think was the cost of that. So, and that'll be a benefit to Hawthorne Park and that particular park. So we look at all these projects. We have a five-year plan, and we try to stick to it, but, you know, life happens, things change, we have to move things up. Stubby Park, the new equipment that went out of Stubby Park, if you drive by there, the number of kids out there is just amazing. I went out there during the summer and it was almost embarrassing to me that we had two Johnny on the spots. They changed, they cleaned them out on Mondays and Thursdays, and you go out there on a 95-degree day, being in a Johnny on the spot is not fun at all. So we are putting toilets in Stubby Park, and we, so we moved something to maybe out of Havens a little bit and bringing it up to Stubby Park immediately because that's just getting so much play. So those are things that we do. We prioritize all the time. Every year, you have to re-prioritize. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson.
Based upon priorities, listening to our constituents, what are the immediate needs? There was a cry out from the community that our parks was not in the best condition, and so we actually did a study, and we started to figure out which parks needed the best services. Now we actually have the parks getting removed and replaced, Northeast Leavenworth at Bob Doherty Park. The Stubby Park was the great, great, great incentive added to our community. It's amazing. Children are now playing at this park. It was so much space there that was being underutilized. And Cody Park, I believe at this time, was the go-to park, the primary park that everyone loved to play in, but the problem was, it was so small, but everyone went there because it was new. Now we have the Stubby Park, which we were able to expand using the entire space, and we left the hills, so no conflict with the community, but the kids are still able to slide during the wintertime and play during the summertime. It's a great investment. When it comes to prioritizing roads, you know, we use our study sessions to reach out to our constituents, listen, and give them prioritization at that time and figure out what's the best approach, what are the immediate needs. Each commission was able to give a list of roads that needed fixed, and that was the time that we were able to reach out to the constituents and listen to them, and we respond based upon the immediate needs, prioritization, and then also collectively as the commission, the importance as a whole, what should we do moving forward.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Griswold.
Yeah, I'll just talk a little bit about, in terms of, and we do have a very healthy reserve, it's about a little over $5 million for budget year 2022, and I think that's been a hallmark of the city of Leavenworth for years, if not decades, in terms of its robust and very sound financial condition as confirmed by all these successful audits that the city has to go through on an annual basis. And actually, right now, we're in pretty good shape as far as our economy, but back in 2010, when the housing market crashed, I think the city had a reserve of about $3 million, maybe a little bit more than $3 million. So over the next two or three years, with the slowdown in the economy, the effect on our businesses and everything, particularly sales tax, the city did not have to either raise taxes or cut back on services because it had a healthy reserve. The reserve did get down to about $300,000, but, you know, it started from a little over $3 million. So these things, you can't look at them, like, suggest you can't look at them on just a yearly basis, you have to look at them over time. In terms of the capital improvements program budget, we're going to spend approximately $6.67 million in 2022. The source of those funds are the countywide sales tax, a portion of the city's sales tax, and general obligation bonds. And our priorities are on roads and the parks and recreation, equipment for our fire and safety forces. In fact, I think this last year, we bought a fire truck, and I think we bonded that because it's a very expensive truck, but the equipment that the police department needs to stay up with all the IT requirements and the cameras and body cams and dash cams and things like that, plus every, you know, every, every year, there's some cars that have to be swapped out. With respect to the, I was one of the commissioners who really pushed for spending more money on roads and felt we could take some money from the sidewalk program. We still have a sidewalk program, but it's at a reduced level from what it had been in previous years. To get that additional $700,000 to $800,000 a year, so we're spending $2 million to $2.1 million on the roads, and you can see, last year was the first year we did that. This year, you really, it's almost an exponential thing where the sum is greater than, the whole is greater than the sum of the parks. There's a heck of a lot of work going on, and you see it, and we also put in parking lots, one or two every year. Those parking lots and the roads are striped, and we're making, we're making progress. I do believe this is an area that I talked about four years ago and working with my fellow commissioners, the city manager and other stakeholders.
And that's time, sir.
Okay. That's fine.
All right. Next question. Historic preservation of the first city is one of many attributes that give Leavenworth a unique identity. Please share your thoughts on preservation of our history, and on the other side of this, your views on the light removal to make our city more attractive. We will start with you, Mr. Wilson.
I believe history is important. It tells us a story of why we are here, where we came from, and where we are going in life. It's important that we retain our history and never forget it because it's our makeup as a community, being proud of the first city of Kansas, having these historical buildings. It tells a story, and it leads to so many leaders that have served before, and some names are attached to some of these establishments. Light removals in the community, I'm very, very supportive of removing light in the community. It is a long process. I know some of our decision-making is very sensitive. I know some of you all may see that we grant extension after extension. It's just based upon us trying to give grace to the homeowner, giving them an opportunity to make the repairs, to fix up their homes, because I don't want anybody to lose their home. But I also have to be considerate about the neighbor that's next door, who's living, living next door to a house that is dangerous, that's been sitting empty for years, have individuals coming in and stealing materials and living inside of it. I am very, very sympathetic when it comes to that. It's a long process. I support our process, and I'll do everything that I can to make sure we are removed from our community.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Griswold.
Certainly, I support historic preservation and the emphasis on the cultural aspects of our first city of Kansas. And one of the things that I ran on four years ago was establishing a vision and then hopefully an associated strategy to support that vision. And it took me a little bit longer than I had intended, but we worked as a commission on our annual city commission goals, and we knew probably in late 2018, early 2019, that we'd have an opportunity to work on a strategy for 2030, 10 years out into the future. So we spent 16 or 17 months with a company from Lenexa helping us with that strategy, all the commissioners were active participants, as were the citizens, over a four- or five-month period of being able to input into that vision and into that plan. And this is where, this is what it is. It's 160 pages. It's a good plan, and we're not going to let it stay on the shelf. The first couple of chapters talks about historical preservation, historical and cultural resources. The first goal, preserve our historic, welcoming, and inclusive community that celebrates its past, plans for its future, and provides opportunities for all people. We've got some, we've got some strategies associated with that, promote the city's historic and cultural resources and the values of historic and cultural preservation. Another one, preserve our historic and cultural resources, creating places people want to live, work, gather, and visit. But underneath that, we have actions that we have, that the staff and the commissioners will have to keep track of and take so we can realize the strategies and the objectives that we've laid out in this 10-year plan. And we intend to do it, and if I, when I am re-elected, the city manager knows that this plan is not going to gather dust. We can take the actions and all the details that are in this, work it, make some decisions in terms of priorities and how those priorities will fit into our budget process, but I am confident we will do that, and it's, I don't think it's a coincidence that this was the first chapter of this particular plan. I do recognize the value of the historic, historical aspect of the city and then, and then using that to thrust us forward economically, not only downtown, but elsewhere in the city with good economic development projects. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President.
Historical preservation is very important to me, and I do believe the rest of the commissioners too. Take a look at this building. It was built in 1888. The amount of money that we put in this every year and the amount of money we've probably put in this in the last 10 years is definitely in the millions. People from the outside, business consultants from the outside, if we show them this building, say, we're going to put in $5 million to, you know, do the stone around it, they say, that's not a good use of your money, you should build a community, a brand-new community center. But we have chosen that we're going to keep this building, keep the historical aspects of it. This is just one of the examples. We have a historic preservation district downtown. It's about, former commissioner, former mayor, weekly can tell me how many square blocks it is. I don't know if it's 28 or 26 square blocks of a historical district. And businesses in that area, if they improve their properties, they get historic tax credits, which are given from the state, which lowers their taxes, which is an incentive for them to invest in their property. We do push for that. The Hampton Inn did not take a penny of incentives from the city of Love North, but they did work off historic tax credits and were able to build a hotel right there. Light removal has been one of my passions since I've been on the commission. We do not take houses away from anybody, kick them out of their houses and tear it down. That has never happened, no matter what anyone says. These are unoccupied houses that have fallen into complete disrepair. We give the owners proper notice and plenty of notice, bring it up to a degree of acceptability. If you don't, the bulldozers do have to roll. You can go around some neighborhoods and you see some just horrible houses. Just think of those neighbors. Just think of the cancer that is on the neighborhood, on their house values. And the purpose of, when we have these meetings on putting houses on the demo list, is not to demolish houses. The purpose is to get the people to invest their money and bring that house back up to a standard that's acceptable. So we cannot have houses that are just falling down, or properties falling down. It's cancer on the city, it's cancer on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next question. I think we have a unique opportunity having incumbents with us tonight. I know Commissioner Honhardt was actually here for a comment, too. I think I'd like to try to give folks a little bit of insight onto what happens behind the scenes, and so one of the questions I would like to ask comes with regard to differences of opinions, differences of philosophies, and/or contested or disagreements, contested both disagreements. So the general question would be, would you publicly support a commission decision you did not vote in favor of, why or why not? And of course, also, were a constituent to contact you to complain about a decision that perhaps you did not agree with? How would you address that? We'll start with you, Mr. Griswold.
Certainly, in terms of the commission, five commissioners, if we have a vote, three to two, four to one, and I happen to be one of those that did not vote in favor of a particular program or a particular motion, if the commission decides that that is the direction that we're going, certainly I will support that. Based on my 30 years in the military, that happened a lot. You'd make your recommendation to your boss on a particular course of action, or, and he would make a decision, wouldn't always be what you're recommending, but you'd go ahead and give it your all in terms of executing what the boss has decided to do. In this case, the boss are five commissioners, and any votes three to two or four to one, if I'm the one or one of the two, I will certainly support it with my utmost, utmost energy, and that's just kind of the way, the way we work. In terms of the dynamics of the, of the commission, at least the current commission and the commission I've served on the last four years, we're able to articulate our concerns and get them respectfully considered. I think one of the things I wanted to do on stormwater was to take a little different approach in terms of how we were analyzing the ground, in terms of assessing the stormwater fee schedule that we had. I had heard from some citizens in the community who felt that it could be a little fairer with respect to the amount of ground that we were considering versus what we had come up with as a commission. I think when I was mayor, I came back I think when I was mayor, I came back to the commission and asked for us to take another look at that. And the other commissioners didn't want to do it. So I think my comment at the time was, that's the way democracy works and we moved on. And that's just a little example. And in case of the citizens who came to me asking for that change, they were disappointed, but I, they knew that I had done the best I could as far as taking, for us taking maybe a different look on terms of how the square footage and how the fee would be applied.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Price.
There are many issues that come before the commission that require spirited discussion among commissioners. And if you're a commissioner and you want your idea to be heard or the other commissioners to go along with you, your job is convince two other commissioners to vote with you, obviously. So you have to try to be convincing in that, in that, on that matter. Of course, if the decision is, say it's three to two, four to one, and you're in the minority, I support the decision 100%. And your second part of your question is, if a citizen calls me and says, you know, I'm against whatever you voted for, whatever was passed and you voted against, what's my response to them? I'd explain why I voted no, but I also would say, but now that is what the commission decided and I will support that. We have to support that. We can't have commissioners or a commission that if somebody votes against it, then they go out and lead a charge against that particular issue. One thing they can do, and it's happened a couple of times in my years on the commission, that we've, somebody's got, some of the commissioners have gotten other commissioners say, let's relook this particular question at some time in the future and we've revoted it. And we have changed the decision now and then, but it has to be done through the process. But once the decision's made, I do support the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson.
I respect the process. I respect each commissioner because they were elected by the people. And so with that being stated, we don't agree on everything. But at the end of the day, we walk away knowing that each person has the entire citizen's best interest at heart. And so because of that, they're elected officials. I respect their position. You know, I, since I've been on the commission almost four years, you know, we're all able to walk away knowing that, you know, at the end of the day, we're still trying to do our best for our community. There's no ill intent. There's no harm trying to be done. There's no mudslinging behind each other's back. So with that, we're able to grow forward because we know that we still have to focus on what's ahead. We disagreed on this issue, but guess what? We've got so many other issues and things that we have to address. So we consistently move this community forward. And the second part question, how do I respond to constituents? Plain and simple. I listen to their concerns. I allow them to vent and I continue to take my stance and I let them know, like, hey, I respectfully disagree. Sorry that you feel that way. This is my stance and this is why I believe what I believe. I'm sorry that we didn't have an agreement, but I still respect you as a person and I still hope to have your support.
Thank you, sir. Next question. As you are likely aware, the city of Leavenworth has received the first tranche of American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds, and will receive a second next year totaling approximately 8.5 million dollars. While the use of these funds is narrow in scope, it can be used for things such as infrastructure, revenue replacement, support to household and businesses, and public health. What is your vision for the use of these once in a lifetime funds? And we'll start with you, Mr. Price.
I'm glad that you mentioned, you know, this is how the money can be used because it still isn't clear. I know our finance directors in weekly meetings, Zoom meetings with other finance directors throughout the state, possibly throughout the country, because all the rules are not set yet. The money's actually sitting in our account. I think it's eight, as you said, 8.5 million, but no one knows exactly how to spend it. We know generally it'd be used for infrastructure and the things that you noted here. I think infrastructure would be a huge use of the money. Roads, sewers, things of that nature. Anything to improve our infrastructure. We need to look at some infrastructure, human infrastructure too. What can we do that can help the citizens? You know, there's always a talk of a grocery store northeast Leavenworth or north Leavenworth. We, the city, will not operate a grocery store. We do give incentives. We have talked to many grocery store owners and say, would you consider up to north Leavenworth or even replace the old Country Mart? Thus far, we haven't anybody, haven't had anyone that has taken a shot at it because basically we have Walmart, Dylan's, and Price Chopper, they say, a mile or two miles away. And, but hopefully we can use some incentive there to draw more businesses into areas that may be considered a food desert. What we do, we have a homeless issue in this town, as does every town. Ours is not unique. We've taken some measures to try to alleviate, I don't want to say alleviate it, but to not be a magnet for people to come in. We need to take care of our own. We did have an issue where we're getting people coming in from outside areas. So we, you know, made some changes there. Infrastructure, revenue replacement, we're doing fairly well on revenue. We have sales tax does very well in this town. I always ask a question and I'll ask it now and let few people just shout out answers. How much money do you think go through the cash registers of the city of Leavenworth every year? Somebody throw out a couple of numbers. How much, how many dollars?
Hundred million.
Hundred million. Anybody else? Just $450 million goes through the cash registers in Leavenworth, Kansas, in the city of Leavenworth per year. That's huge. That brings in, and we get 2% of that, we get $9 million in sales tax. We do very well. So, and of course, we want that to increase because that can do, we can do a lot of things with that money. But how we use that ARPA money, it will be used judiciously. Our finance director, city manager, and all of us are involved. Once all the rules are clear, we will put it to good use. We're not going to sit on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson.
The city has until December 2025 to extend ARPA dollars. The scope is somewhat limited and the reporting is much more rigorous than CARES Act funds. Our staff is putting together a spin plan for commission review. The funds could provide a one-time opportunity to extend utilities, stormwater, and sewer to areas to facilitate growth, as well as repair crumbling stormwater or sewer infrastructure in older parts of the community. That should be done with planning and thought. There is also an expectation that funds could be used to make an impact in youth services and neighborhood improvements. This is not something we should rush into, nor is it something we need to determine right now. The funds should complement the implementation of the 2030 plan to make Leavenworth a more attractive place to live, work, and raise a family.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Griswold.
We took, we first took a look, city manager came and gave us a good amount of information during a study session in early September. And we've received about 4.2 million dollars of this ARPA money that we're going to receive. We're going to receive another three to four million. So it's somewhere north of eight million dollars that we're going to receive. So it's very important that we take this deliberate process and determine how this money is going to be applied. And the accounting standards, in terms of accounting for the money, much more stringent than what happened with the CARES Act. So that's another thing that's going to take some time to really figure out. Some of the things we're thinking about in terms of infrastructure, hopefully we can do it, but there's a lot of backup documentation that we've got to check to make sure that we don't spend the money erroneously or in some way in contravention of what's in the, in terms of what's, it's in the act. But we could spend it supporting the public health response. We could address the negative impact caused by the public health emergency, which we still have with the Delta variant in terms of the impact on our community. Certainly, we could look at it to serve the hardest-hit communities and families. And of course, with the CARES money, CARES Act money, we spent about a million dollars, $250,000 to help with grants, to help businesses within, small businesses within the city. And then about 750,000 went to community support organizations who went out and helped citizens with utilities, with food, with shelter. And I'm pretty proud. I was the mayor during that year and we looked at it very hard. So we spent a million dollars helping the city get through the impact and address the negative consequences of COVID-19 and its impact on the economy and people's lives. Replacing lost public sector revenue, Commissioner Price mentioned that. Providing premium pay for essential workers, maybe some of our refuse workers, people that really are out there on the front lines, that'll be something that we take a look at. Investing in water and sewer infrastructure, we've talked about that. And that is something that really interests me, particularly in terms of our wastewater treatment plant, which needs, I think going forward is going to be, need to be updated with respect to its equipment and machinery. And then investing in broadband infrastructure. And all facility, all city facilities, you know, I think are due to be upgraded with respect to broadband and just the 5G, what's happening in our city with respect ATT, AT&amp;T laying that fiber optic cable. We need to take a look at all the facilities and our equipment within the city to see how we can, you know, stay, stay abreast of all the changes with information technology. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. As I suspected earlier and mentioned earlier in the evening, we are just clipping along and we have asked the majority of the questions that I had. So I would like to just ask one more question and then we'll turn it over to the floor for your questions. And this might have been a little bit of a challenge. I would like to ask each of you, if reelected, what one, what your top one priority would be on behalf of the city if reelected? Just one. Just, I know you probably have dozens, but just limit yourselves to one. And we'll start with you, Mr. Wilson.
Investing in youth programming. Our youth are the future. Our youth are in need of something that's going to keep them out of trouble. If we don't provide services for our youth right now, we could end up losing them to the penitentiary or we could end up losing them to drugs. I know what it's like to not have the resources available. And it led me to doing things that led to my incarceration. So I want to prevent that for our youth. We have some very, very talented youth that has potential to do extraordinary things in life, but they just need to get connected to the right resources that is going to invest inside of them. I've already been in communications with the Boys and Girls Club and my desire is to bring the Boys and Girls Club here, right here in Leavenworth.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Griswold.
It would be to implement Leavenworth's vision and 2030 comprehensive plan. 160 pages. There's everything in here with respect to economic development, infrastructure, public safety, historical preservation, the cultural aspects of the city that we need to continue to emphasize. And it may seem mundane, and I understand that, but the one that was done in 2011, for some reason, just sat on the shelf. Now, our charge as far as the commission to the city manager is to create an implementation plan that links strategic goals, actions, the actions are in here, and the strategic goals are too, and metrics. And that's, that will be his job, the staff's job, to come up with those metrics, so we can determine how we're doing as far as progressing against meeting these strategic goals and the, and the strategies that support those goals. And then periodically reporting out to the citizens of Leavenworth as far as how we're doing. We did have great participation over the course of four or five months, even though we had to use Zoom. There was a lot of participation. Commissioners participated. But what I like were the citizens and the businesses within the city participating. It's a good plan, may seem mundane, but we can keep our eye on the things that are in this plan and really follow through because execution is the most important thing that a leader can do. You can have all the best plans in the world, but if you don't follow through in terms of implementation and execution, then your, your ideas and your vision for the city, which we say now, we want it to be the best city in the Midwest, just not going to come to pass. You've got to execute and execute with rigor and enthusiasm. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Price.
Infrastructure and economic development, infrastructure and economic development go hand in hand. The more that we can improve our infrastructure, economic development will follow. We'll get more businesses. We'll broaden our tax base. And with a broader tax base, we can do these programs. We can do the youth programs. We can do many of the other programs. And we have to improve our, expand our tax base. First thing we have to do is improve our infrastructure. We are improving it, but we, it's a continuous process. And continuing to do that spurns economic development. Then that rising tide raises all ships, as they say. And a broader tax base will help us all.
Thank you, sir. Chuck, if I could ask you to please turn on the microphone for us. I will go ahead and turn the floor over to attendees to come and speak. I already seen one hand, so Mr. Griswold, if you'd like to come to the mic. I will remind everyone in the room, before we continue, these may be your three least favorite people in the world. I'm, not me, not me. These may be your three least favorite people in the world, but I, I promise you now, if they are not treated, if we are not all treating each of you with respect, I will end the event immediately. Mr. Griswold.
Thank you for saying that. I fully understand what you mean. I guess, Mr. Wilson, first I want to thank you for wanting to come forward and push agendas for our kids and our youth. And I hope you'll help us all further, possibly the putting of cameras in schoolrooms so that the bullying of our youth can stop immediately. My question to you though, specifically, is that, will you consider maintaining your independent status in order to possibly run against Republican Pat Proctor in the next election, where I believe is so anti-kid, anti-youth, and anti-minority that he has to be removed? I'm asking you to please consider running for that position when the time comes and to maintain your, your status as an independent person.
No disrespect to you or whoever you're addressing this to. My main focus is the city right now. And I'm only serving as an independent because my heart and desire is to bring unity, Democrats, Republicans, and all politicians together so we can work together, serve together, so we can move forward. So the state is not a priority to me. I love my city, my community, and I'm focusing on being a city commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, please. Jeff, I'll lay your hand if you want to go to our turn. And so we'll get to you then after this term.
Fiscal responsibility. Camp Leavenworth cost the city just north of $60,000 for the contract. Certain individuals that are prominent in the community have been stumping the area stating that the incumbent commissioners were irresponsible in spending taxpayer dollars for the festival, that that money should have better spent directly invested in the people and businesses of the city. Since that allegation affects all three of you who are directly involved, would one or all of you care to address the spending of that of those funds?
All right, thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and start with you, Mr. Griswold.
Certainly. I, I saw the, what was said in public by that individual and it did.
May I ask a question?
What I, what I saw on it, I do believe that if it wasn't a direct assault in terms of our integrity as far as this particular program and the funds that we're using, it was at least inferred pretty strongly. But the funds for the Camp Leavenworth are, are obtained from the transient guest tax, that the hotels that have been stood up and have in the last five to 10 years in the city of Leavenworth, that's where the funds for the Camp Leavenworth, all the functions and responsibilities we had, that's the source of funds. Those aren't taxpayer funds. Those are the funds that are provided by people who come to the city and stay in our hotels. And so it was an unfair and inaccurate charge. And it did, it did bother me because it's, because it's not true. The only other thing that I would say is that when I ran four years ago, we did hear, because the old Buffalo Ville days had, that festival had ended the year 2014 or 2015, there was great interest within the community in terms of having a city festival planned, hosted, and run by the city of Leavenworth. And I think we've done a pretty good job. 2019 was the first year we did that. Was a good, good turnout. I think we had 7,000 people. We learned, we looked at it, made some improvements for 2021, 2021. Unfortunately, we couldn't have it last year because of COVID, but we had over 10,000 people come to the festival, including Melissa Etheridge, who gave a great free concert for two or two and a half hours. So that's what I would say. It's just that it's not true that the money came from sales taxes or property taxes. It came from our transient guest tax that we get from the hotels that are part of this community and a very important part of our economic base that we have now here in the city.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Preisinger?
As Commissioner Griswold said, the transient guest tax paid for Camp Leavenworth, and Mr. Howard said $60,000. The total bill comes in, it's going to be probably about 100 and a quarter. We paid $45,000 for the organizers. We rent stages, we had to pay for the entertainment, Melissa Etheridge and her entourage, police overtime, setting up, tearing down. I'm guessing 100 and a quarter, the final numbers aren't in. By state law, transient guest tax can only be used for tourism-type activities, and that qualifies. We've done a few other things, the Welcome to Leavenworth signs up north, Stubby Park, a few other things. But it's very narrow. We can't use it for roads, we can't use to hire police officers. We can use to pay overtime for police officers at these events, but it's very narrowly focused the way it can be spent. The transient guest tax is huge. Seven years ago this week, the first hotel opened, Fairfield Inn. Cut the ribbon, I remember October 5th or October 12th, 2014. Before that, we used to get $10,000 to $15,000 a year in transient guest tax, which maybe by trash can, I don't know what, you know, with that, you really can't make a huge impact. Anyone care to guess how much we're going to get in transient guest tax this year? $500,000. We're going to get $500,000. Those five hotels are bringing in $500,000 in transient guest tax. And we can only use it for certain things. Obviously, Camp Leavenworth was a huge success. 10,000 people, over 10,000 people over a two-day period. Melissa Etheridge, obviously, being a daughter of Leavenworth, brought thousands of people into town. Hotels were all full, talked to any of the restaurateurs. They did a land office business. We ate at the Suburban, my wife and I and some friends earlier last week, and he's just said he had a record weekend. Those are things that we need to do, highlights the town. Businesses can do well. Those out-of-towners that came here, they saw the town, they liked it. They'll be coming back for different things. So as Commissioner Griswold said, it was not your sales tax, it was not your property tax, it was what we used, and it was a proper use of it. There was nothing improper. And during the whole planning, we never heard anything. We did hear the snipes after the thing was over, which I considered kind of a, you know, not a fair snipe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson?
How many of you all attended the Camp Leavenworth? Wasn't it amazing? Did you all have a great time? Well, it's because of those motels, we were able to put together very, very successfully. It brought thousands of people together. Am I correct, was it 10,000?
Over 10,000. 10,160.
Yep. In two days, this event was amazing because of these motels. We were able to create memories with our children, with our family. And Melissa Etheridge got a chance to come into her hometown and put together a free concert, which was amazing, not only for our community, but memorable for her because she said during a concert, she wanted to come to Leavenworth and put together a massive concert, but she had no location to do the concert. Well, because of Camp Leavenworth, we were able to use the transient guest tax funds to be able to establish this festival, put on about the city. Now, we gave her an opportunity, a space, and we were able to bring a massive group of people together to cheer on, to support her, and in return, she invested back in our community. So thank you all, if you ever stayed in those motels. God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
First, I want to thank you all three for your years of service to the, to the city, greatly appreciated. So it's obvious that our town is divided, and there's no better visual than what we see at the table right here, right now. We have groups of, of people that say that they don't have a voice, and we know that we have a large population, marginalized population, that actually don't have a voice. With all of that aside, I'd like to know what each of you are going to do if reelected to help repair and bring Leavenworth back to the, the way it was, where we focus on city issues, and this is nonpartisan, and we just focus on what the city needs and not what a large party needs or whatever else is going.
Thank you, sir. Great question. Mr. Preisinger, we'll start with you.
As Mr. Teven said, yes, the city, I'm, I'm not sure the city is divided. There are factions within the city, in my opinion, who are trying to divide us, making a nonpartisan election on school boards and city councils and Lansing City Commissions here as partisan, and it shouldn't be. My focus will always be every issue that comes before the commission, everything that I vote on. The question I ask myself is, what is for the greater good? And it's not a partisan thing, it's not Republican, Democrat, Independent. It's what is for the greater good of the city? And every question that comes before me, before the commission, I ask myself that question. I don't ask myself, what does this particular political faction feel that I should do, or do I need this? Do I make, need to make this decision so that political group will support me in something else? We have to remain nonpartisan. Your cities and your school boards are the most influential governing bodies that affect your daily life. State level, you know, you have five of us on city commission, you have seven on a school board. We make everyday decisions that affect the roads you ride on, the taxes you pay for your house, the schools your children are educated in. At the state level, if you're representative, you're one of 125. If you're a senator, you're one of 40. At the national level, obviously, we know that number of 435, House members, 100 senators. But the greatest influence is at your local level, and that has to remain independent of the vitriol, everything that's going on. And we have to just make our decisions for what is for the greater good of the city, and that's where I'll always be in my decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson?
To keep the city commission nonpartisan. I serve to make a difference. I don't serve for a position, and I don't serve to represent a party. There's nothing wrong with parties, but every decision that I make, I do it on behalf of my constituents. I pray to God and ask God for guidance and wisdom when I'm faced with tough decisions. But at the end of the day, I'm all about bringing people together because we all need each other in order to do something. You have gifts and talents that I don't have. You have gifts and talents I don't have. I'm not good at administrative work, but I'm good at communication. So if we put your administrative skills with my communication skills, that's what, now we can articulate our message and get it out to our constituents. But that is my key role, is to continue to promote unity, peace inside of our city commission and as well as outside the city commission, inside of our community. Because when we leave the chambers, we're still representing the people in our community. When we go to the grocery stores, or when we go to our churches, we're still those elected officials that you represent. So we want to represent you well. You might not have voted for either one of us, but at the end of the day, our main goal is to serve each and every last one of you all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Griswold?
I think it's unfortunate that a certain individual has taken some steps to make this year's city elections partisan because that hasn't been, that's not been in concert with the state statute in terms of city elections, both city commission, city council, city school boards. And it's not in concert with the history and tradition of elections in this city. So I think that's very, very unfortunate. And all we can do, when I ran, and my motivation for running four years ago, was because I care deeply about people, and in this case, the citizens of our city, the first city of Kansas, and desire to continue improving their quality of life. I get, I get a lot of satisfaction out of improving the organizations or the governing bodies or the cities that I'm, that I'm a part of. And I think I've been able to, working with other commissioners, but I have taken the initiative on certain things that we're starting to see come to fruition within the city. We've mentioned some of those here in terms of economic development, infrastructure, and those type of things. But that's really my motivation. And when I ran four years ago, one of the books I read was by a gentleman, a journalist from New York Times, a commentator named Tom Friedman. He wrote a book, Thank You for Being Late. He talked about his hometown, St. Louis Park, Minnesota, and, which is outside Minneapolis-St. Paul. It had changed in the four years since he had left. A lot of immigrants from Africa had come in there. He, he's a Jewish man, so, you know, the population had changed, but the city was doing everything it could to bring people together, collaboratively, doing small projects on a smaller scale, seeing if those projects worked, and then, and then ramping them up, scaling them for the entire city. And that was kind of one of my motivations for running. And I thought that I had a pretty good experience as far as being the president of the school board out of Fort Leavenworth, at, at Fort Leavenworth, the Kansas Public School District there, plus some other things, serving on some task forces that supported the community, that I wanted to take that step to better the community and, and I think some of the decision, I know some of the decisions we've made in this past year with respect to the funds we got from the CARES Act were to help people who were really in, in not-too-good straits, due to no fault of their own. And we spent, you know, a million dollars of that CARES Act money to help those people through the community service organizations and the, and the businesses, the small businesses within Leavenworth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before we move on to the next question, I couldn't help but notice Commissioner Wilson mentioned going to the grocery store. I lived in Leavenworth my entire life, and, and I tell people I knew everyone before I started the chamber, and then when I started the chamber, I met everyone else. I also know that there are spouses and children, other family members here in the crowd. I would like to ask, I would like to ask you a little bit, you and Zee Joy, I'm just thinking, do you guys go to the grocery store with them anymore? Out of curiosity, because my wife won't go with me, so.
He always has word of mine.
Understood, understood. Just wanted to ask that question, because my wife won't go to the grocery store with me anymore. She only took one or two trips, five items for about three hours after that stop. Any other questions from the floor? Mr. Wilson, you don't know?
Just one last question concerning the, the grocery stores stuff. I guess to each of you, what would it take to get you to agree to possibly subsidize or own a grocery store until such time comes as you can sell it to someone for a dollar if the, if what's done in the past? I've been traveling the country for the last six weeks, and it really concerns me that in smaller towns than ours, I see cities a lot smaller than this, like I said, that are taking ownership of pot dispensaries and everything else like that. If we have a, a number of people who need the grocery store in this area, why can't you guys get together and give us a little grocery store that you can put up for sale at some future date in order to help those 300 or 400 minority candidates that greatly need it? You've got this $5 million coming in. What better, what better form of use of that?
Good question. We'll start with you, Mr. Wilson.
I think the commission will do whatever we have to do to establish a grocery store. But the problem is finding the right location and finding people to operate the grocery store. That has been the challenge. We do have these resources coming available, but if, you can tell throughout all these other businesses establishing, establishments, they're struggling to retain workers. And I truly believe that's going to be the challenge. But we will continue to do everything that we can when it comes to establishing a grocery store.
Maybe hire Iris from the food bank, she's got a great job.
She is, but there's going to be some things to be on the lookout for. I don't want to disclose everything, but definitely be in prayer the Latin word for mission, that's all I want to say right now.
Thank you. Mr. Griswold?
I would just say it's a very, very good point. I think that what I said before, I'm certainly willing to take, certainly willing to take a look at it. And, you know, we had a conversation about these ARPA funds that have come in, and there's like seven categories. And of course, we'd have to check because there are a lot of finite restrictions in terms of how that money could be spent. But that's probably something we could take a look at and maybe start, and if it's possible, I mean, we're going to get eventually a little over north of $8 million. If it's possible to have, you know, kind of a small-scale pilot program or approve of principle, I would, I wouldn't hesitate to ask the city, city manager to look into that and come back to the city commission to see what might be possible regarding an approach like that. And I'm all for experimenting, and if you get some success, you can scale it up, as I mentioned before in one of my comments, and I think this would be a good, could be, might be a good candidate to do that. I think Commissioner Preiser can talk to the challenges probably, since he's been on the commission for a lot longer than myself and Commissioner Wilson in terms, because there have been efforts, maybe every six months, to get, you know, a grocery store chain, to put a grocery store in the northeast portion of Leavenworth, and it, and it hasn't worked, worked out yet. There is a, I did see on Facebook a month, or maybe a month or so ago, with a group of citizens who have come together and are providing transportation for residents that have a problem with transportation, to get them to the grocery stores that exist. And I, I did not know that that group existed before I saw the Facebook post. But I'm, I'm supportive of that, and I know they're all volunteers and everything, but if there's some way the city could kind of reinforce their effort with any actions we could take, I would be completely in support of that approach. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Preisinger?
I don't think it's a real good idea for the city to get into competition with other businesses, direct competition. But I do think it's important that the city provide incentives, go out and try to find grocery stores, food distributors, or something to do, to come here. I don't think we're equipped to run a grocery store. It's, you know, running a grocery store is not just having four dozen eggs and a couple gallons of milk and some fruit and vegetables. I mean, it's, it's a tough under going, it takes professionals to do it. We have to, we are available to give incentives. When Country Mart closed, what, five, six years ago, I talked to the gentleman that owned it. He has one other store in Sedalia, Missouri, a Country Mart. His son ran that one. His son did not want to run the one in Leavenworth, didn't want to run two. He had the thing for sale for two years, no one would buy it. The grocery stores are a tough business. As soon as he closed, I called Sprouts, I called, was it Save-A-Lot? Some other ones, their national headquarters. They put me in touch with the Kansas-Missouri location managers. They looked at it, they call it up, they all have business plans, and they call up on the computer, say, where's it located? And I said it was on 20th Street Traffic Way and Highway 92, rather than 20th and Spruce, so it made it sound like it's a, you know, bigger, bigger thing. The guy, I remember one, they called it up, they're on the phone five minutes, he said, the traffic count there on that road is, you know, X number north of there, in the northwest part of there, you've got 2,100 homes, in northeast part, you've got 800 homes. You've got a store a mile and a quarter directly south of that one. You have another one, a mile and 5/8, and you have another one, two miles away. He said, we can't sustain that. You know, and I know to us, you know, that doesn't make sense, but these are business people, they have to make a business decision. But we have to give incentives. Now, Dan here, we talked about, at the Lions Club last week, they talked about, they give rides to people that need to get to the grocery stores, charge. You can call, $2, it's $2 a ride, wasn't it, Jeff? Were you there at the meeting last? Yeah, it's two, there's, she can talk about it. The grocery store rides, $2 per person, take you to the grocery store and take you home. And there's a certain area, specifically in the northeast part of town, that people qualify for, and they're advertising that service. Obviously, they're not a grocery store, but they will get you there and back.
Thank you. Any other questions from the, since two hands go over at the same time, I'll let you guys duke it out.
Well, with respect to the grocery stores and people who are looking for work, we don't have credit for that. Is there anything that we can do about public credit for that? To have a city public credit for that?
We'll start with you, Mr. Griswold.
Yes, well, in fact, this is a project that the, the commission, led by formerly Commissioner Bowder, but now Mayor Bowder, Bowder, but now Mayor Bowder, that we've been working since, I think, the commission late 2017. And I think we're gonna be able, we're working with the Guidance Center, and there are some grants that we've been able to get, the city's been able to get for a certain number of vans. I don't remember exactly the number of vans, but we are working, in fact, we talked about this at one of our, within the last month, either a city commission meeting or a study session. So, we are committed for intra-city transit, to help people get to medical appointments, get to the grocery store, fulfill other responsibilities within the city of Leavenworth. And we're not starting from scratch, because the Guidance Center has a pretty robust transportation plan that they, and so, the city, Ms. Mary Dwyer, who's the staff person in the lead on this particular project, working with Mr. Rickert, the executive director of the Guidance Center, under the guidance and enthusiasm of Mayor Bowder, we're gonna have that intra-city transportation program in place pretty soon. I don't know if it'll be by the end of the year, but certainly, I would think in the first few months of 2022. And I think it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President?
As Commissioner Griswold said, Mayor Bowder, it's been one of the things she's championed ever since she's been on the commission. And she's worked closely with Kansas City ATA Area Transportation Authority, and she's on, I think she's on that board. And I believe we are gonna get transportation. I think it's in December. There's actually some vans coming in that will be available. There is other transportation in town. Obviously, the Council on Aging provides transportation. They will take people to medical appointments, I think, as far, into Kansas City. So, there is availability, but we need more. And I think the grant that we're getting from Kansas City ATA, and the vans and the small buses that we're getting, that should hit town in December, you will see more transportation opportunities for people.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson?
With your vote and support, we'll have transportation to 2022.
Please get to the point.
You're just echoing the other commissioners. We definitely have high hopes before the end of the year, if not at the end of the year, definitely, we're upon that.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna go ahead and say that we're sitting right at about seven thirty, and we've set aside some times for closings. Would anyone object to go ahead with closing statements and maybe take a lot of, or do I see any objections? Okay. I think we'll go ahead and move into the closing statements. I'm gonna give each candidate up to three minutes for a closing statement, and following the rotation that we've been following all evening, we will start with Mr. President.
Thank you. I don't have a prepared closing statement, but I want to thank everyone for coming here. A good crowd tonight. What are they, about forty people or so, thirty-five or forty? As, as I've stated earlier, your city elections, your school board elections are the most important elections, I believe, that have the greatest impact on your daily lives. And I applaud all of you for being here. I hope that all of you vote. I know, I suspect a hundred percent of the people in this room will vote. I encourage you to have your neighbors vote, encourage everyone to vote. It's very important. As I said earlier, every decision I make, I ask myself, what is for the greater good of this, of the city? Many of our decisions, if you watch city commission meetings, are very mundane. You know, you have to buy a police car, so do I go into deep thought as what is the greater good? No. But on other issues, you do have to make that decision. One, one thing that's changed quite a bit in city commission races, making it somewhat partisan was a few years ago. If you remember, it used to be that you would file for city commission by January twenty-fifth or so, and that's when it would close, last Monday in January. Then, if there were enough for a primary, you'd have a primary at the last Tuesday in February, or the first Tuesday in March. And then that whittled it down to the general election, which would be the first Tuesday in April. And the new commissioners would take a seat on the second Tuesday in April. Now, the filing starts in January, goes all the way to June, closes there, a primary in August, and then the general election in November. We've got a ten-month cycle. And if someone, let's say they're not running for election, in January, they're not running for election, you basically have a lame duck for ten, ten, eleven months. This is wrong, city elections, in my opinion. I think it's a move by certain factions within the state to try to make city elections partisan, that they want to start assigning parties to. And they argue, say, and I've had discussions with representatives that really pushed this, they said, we do the same thing. We start in January and go to November. But they, they quit in May. They don't make any decisions after May. The House and Senate closes. We on the city commission, those on the school board, are making decisions all the way through November. It, this long process is terrible. And I'm, I'm sure everyone just loves, let me see how many political signs we can put out. It's just, the process is too long, and I think it should go back to a shorter process. We can all get our ideas out in a short period of time. We don't need ten months for everyone to get to know us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson?
I love Leavenworth. I care about Leavenworth. I'm from Leavenworth. I met my beautiful wife at thirteen years old in Leavenworth. I started my family here in Leavenworth. Leavenworth helped, shaped, and motivated me to be the godly man that I am today. That's why I'm committed to serving the citizens in our community. Leavenworth has helped me throughout these years. I've made mistakes, and I learned from my mistakes. But the citizens have given me an opportunity to be able to serve from my experience and because of my experience. I thank you all for giving me an opportunity and not judging me based upon my past. For that, I will always be a member of this city of Leavenworth. I encourage each and every last one of you all to vote. Vote from your heart. Vote, and look at the track record that each commissioner has done for this community. And also look at their track record for the things that they've done prior to joining this commission. I serve because I care for each and every last person that is inside of this city of Leavenworth. I've been faced with challenges. I've been faced with obstacles. But because I've surrounded myself around individuals inside of this community who's willing to help push me forward to grow into the man that I am today, it's because you all care for me. It's because you all give. It's because you all invest inside of our community. I want to continue to do everything that I can to help move this community forward, because I love each and every last one of you all. I don't see race. I don't see political parties. I see concerned citizens that want to make the best decision for their community. And so, I say thank you for allowing me to serve the past four years, and I hope and pray that you'll give me an opportunity to serve for four more years. God bless you all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Griswold?
In closing, I would like to thank Mr. Brandon Joannis and the Leavenworth Lansing Chamber of Commerce, and of course, the League of Women Voters for hosting this evening's forum, and all Leavenworth citizens in attendance. I appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedules and asking good questions. Leavenworth is my adopted home. I finished up a thirty-year career in the military in 2003. The year before, my wife and I decided to purchase a home in Leavenworth. We still are in that home. We love Leavenworth, the community, and feel very, very happy and fortunate here. Two of my three children have graduated from Leavenworth High School, as had my first grandchild, our granddaughter Lily, who graduated in 2014. So, I have, I know USD four-five-three, I think the world of that district. And I, I know something about running a school district in terms of the responsibilities I have on Fort Leavenworth. But I just wanted to just reemphasize that I love the people of Leavenworth. I want the citizens overall to improve the quality of life of all the citizens within the city of Leavenworth. And I just wanted to give you a little context from where I'm coming from, because I did not grow up in Leavenworth, but I love this city. During the last four years, I have applied my significant experience, leadership skills, and business acumen to address the challenges facing the city. I am a man of my word and have put a premium on building trust among and between citizens, businesses, groups, and organizations, all in an effort to get results for Leavenworth. I like the work. I'm pretty good at it, and would be honored to serve another term on the commission. I respectfully ask for your support, and most importantly, your vote on November second. Thank you.
Thank you all. Let's give the candidates a little time. For the full year term, I'm about to thank my volunteer timekeeper, Kelly Buckner, who is a student of mine. I'd like to thank that I had several board members in the Chamber of Commerce looking to offer their support. I'd like to thank my boss, Julia. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for their support in executing this forum and last night's forum. And finally, as a reminder, we'll get to you. Don't hold that against me. I'm sorry. I will move on. Next Tuesday, still in partnership with the League, we will be at the Lansing Community Center, six o'clock in the evening for the Lansing Board of Education. Elections will have a vast majority of those candidates. And look tomorrow, hopefully, to have tonight and last night's forums broadcast. Again, thank you all for coming out tonight, and I wish you all a great evening.